To the pledge. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number two, amendments to the agenda. I did not see any. Just looking down, so they will stand as distributed. Item number three, approve the minutes of the January 21st, 2025 board meeting.
Mr. Chair, so moved?
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? And just as I was remembering not to do roll calls, I did last meeting since I didn't want to share, we have to do roll call because we are all present. I should mention that Commissioner Ulrich is here via Zoom. So for that reason, we will do roll call on the minutes. Michelle?
Commissioner Wacklin-Brucki?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf?
Aye.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan?
Here.
Commissioner Ulrich?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number four, we have a big room of folks, new employees. Why don't you start making your way? Make a line to the microphone. Don't be shy. Why don't you give us a little introduction of who you are, what area you are working in? And a fun fact that you think the world needs to know because this could be going viral. I don't know. We'll see. It's up to you.
Hi, my name is Tiana Salami. I go by Ty. I joined Scott County in November. I'm with Child Protection and Assessments and Investigations. And a fun fact about me, I'm a huge Harry Potter fan. Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Welcome.
I also want to say that yesterday she volunteered some information on generational living and she's now going to be on a little bit of a committee talking about caring adults in life. So I appreciated that.
Nice. Good.
I'm Ann Fletcher. I'm also in Child Protection, but I'm doing ongoing case management. I've been here since November as well. And a fun fact is that my family has had Viking season tickets since the seventies.
Ooh, that's, they're emotionally resilient. Yes.
Very resilient.
Yes. Wow, that's strength right there.
Hi, my name is Peyton Somerville. I am in coordinated response, so I'll be the jail-based social worker. And my fun fact is that I followed in my mother's footsteps. She has been a Scott County employee for now 30 years as of Thursday. And she also works in adult mental health, so.
Nice. Welcome.
I'm Jalen Kern, and I'm going to be a corrections officer. Fun fact about me is I'm going to Florida on Friday.
I'm Shelby Mangelco. I'm going to be a corrections officer. And my fun fact, I'm short when I played basketball most of my life.
Nice. Good. Nice.
My name's Brandon Taylor. I'll be a corrections officer. Fun fact, I have a puppy.
All right. Work ahead of you with that puppy.
My name's Jordan Myland. I'm also going to be a corrections officer. I, before this, was doing security at Walmart and Bloomington, and also security at Wild Bill's. Fun fact, I don't know if it's really fun, but I'm a huge Minnesota sports fan, which can be fun, but can also be really disappointing.
That's again resilient right there. Yes.
My name is Kalen Roush. I'm going to be a corrections officer. And fun fact is Crocs are my favorite footwear. Too bad they're not approved to wear at work.
Sport mode or not sport mode? That's the, that's, okay, okay.
My name is Julie Jacobson, and I am the community program coordinator for the libraries in Scott County. My fun fact is I was part of the Disney College Program.
Oh, wow.
So I got to work at Disney World for nine months.
Oh, boy. And, and, because we always talk about with our new employees, like hey, if they see change, if something we should improve, you know, is there, you did mention, what was it, that we should maybe start dance?
Dance circle.
Dance circle, like when we do the new employee? So I don't know. Stay tuned. Stay tuned. I mean, well, I mean, it's optional, optional.
Today's the day.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emma, and currently I'm a National Guard. My fun fact, I love traveling the country and learning new things.
Yes. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Shelley Byer. I'm going to be a corrections officer here for Scott County. Fun fact, I have two kids and a lot of grandkids.
Nice. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Corey Johnson. I'll be a corrections officer. Fun fact about me is I love motorcycling, and this will be the eighth year going to the Sturgis Motorcycle Rally for me.
Sturgis, Buffalo Chip.
Good morning. My name is Ismael of Larrin. I'll be a correctional officer. My fun fact about me, I'm a voracious reader.
Nice. Good for you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Joseph Phillips. I'm a CEO also, and my fun fact is I like helping people.
Welcome. Thank you. And if you notice, there's a lot of COs. And I told them, like, hey, if I end up on the wrong side, like, I'm going to have some friends over there.
Right.
Don't, you see, you just perked up.
Yeah. Oh, Mr. Chair, thank you. I have been able to, I've had the privilege to be part of new employee welcome for two years now. It was my first, first month off of that gig, and I missed meeting you guys, but really just want to say thank you for choosing Scott County. Thank you for choosing public service. Even, I know sometimes you think when you're a corrections officer, your duties are to keep people safe, keep them in line, but you're really here to change lives. I think everybody here at Scott County, you're here to change lives, and in a lot of ways, we want to work ourselves out of a job. So thank you, and I hope you enjoy it here.
Okay, see, we said all of those same things, and we were not, right, she wasn't part of that meeting, but we said all those same things because we believe in that. We want to change lives. We want to bring hope and action and transformation. You guys are the hands and feet of all that. So thank you. Anything else from, I didn't look left or right. There's a little dance coming.
Oh, enjoy your time in District One on your bus tour. I bet you'll be spending some time in District One.
So, yeah, you guys, Jake is waiting out there with Jen and Brian. You're going to have a great tour of the county today and see the folks you serve. So have a wonderful day.
Thank you, everyone. All right, we're going to move on to item number five, recognition of interested citizens. Please make your way to the podium. If you want to speak on anything that is not on the agenda, we always, I mean, this is one of my favorite times, but I'm not seeing anyone, but I want to make sure. We got a few people here. No one moving towards interested citizens. We will move on to item number six, the consent agenda. These will all pass in one motion. 6.1, adopt resolution number 2025-29, authorizing a budget amendment and entering amendment number two to the Veterans Treatment Court Agreement. 6.2, adopt resolution number 2025-30, authorizing a budget amendment and entering amendment number one to the Drug Treatment Court Agreement. 6.3, adopt resolution number 2025-33, approving the rezone preliminary plat and final plat of Rescrap Farm Number Two, Kelby and Brianna Rescrap applicants, and Jeffrey and Pamela Rescrap property owners. 6.4, adopt resolution number 2025-34, approving final adoption of the Louisville-Maryam Junction and Shallow Waters Regional Trail Long Range Plans. 6.5, adopt or approve appointment of citizens to advisory committee. 6.6, approve the renewal application for a precious metal dealer license for pawn exchange in Shakopee. 6.7, approve the lawful gambling premises permit application for Lakeville South Football Association at Red Fox Tavern and Kitchen in New Market Township. 6.8, approve a new application for a Scott County intoxicating liquor license for Schultz's Restaurant Group in New Market Township. 6.9, approve payroll processing of personnel actions. Those are the items on consent.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, and then I have a comment.
Second. Motion and a second, and discussion or comments?
I have a comment on 6.5, where we're appointing a new citizen to the Park Advisory Committee, and Carter McNew is the new District Three representative. He's waving out there. So he decided to come and see us approve him.
Thank you so much for coming on in and being a part of the community. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, any other comments or discussion? And we may need to just wait a second for a roll call vote. We can start in a different order, maybe. Got some things kind of going around here.
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf?
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Wacklin-Brucki?
Aye.
Nice. We made it. We made it. All right. And did someone say 7.1? We're kicking that off the agenda. We're not having, is that? Oh, no, it's still on. Okay. We're going to move to item number seven, 7.1, receive an informational presentation on Demcon, the HZI Bioenergy LLC's land use application to build an anaerobic digester facility in Louisville Township. And you know what? I did not know, and I'm trying this out, I'm not sure, but that we're going to have the garzar, or I'm not sure, or the Zarbage of garbage, or the royalty of refuse. I'm not sure which way, I haven't found which way I'm going to go with that, but wow, I guess we'll wait to see how that all plays out, but. Yeah, 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 yeah. So Greg, take it away. Sorry.
That's okay. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So along with myself, Greg Wagner with Planning and Zoning. Today with me, Bill Keegan from Demcon, Kate Sidloczek, our Environmental Services Manager, and then Tristan Martenson. So we'll all be doing a part of this presentation, but I wanted to just kind of kick it off with the general land use discussion here. So on the screen is the site location map of the proposed Demcon digester facility in Section 28 Louisville Township. So the, the site is outlined in the blue there. It is the southern extent of the former Brian Rock Quarry. So Brian Rock recently started excavating aggregate material on the 15 acres on the north portion of that blue box, and Demcon is falling behind with their digester facility. So to the north of the property, let's see if, okay, so to the north of the property was the former Brian Rock Quarry, which Demcon is taking over and was approved to expand their demolition landfill. Now, as Brian Rock mines out this area, they will reclaim it, and they have an agreement to purchase the property with Demcon for their digester. In red, I wanted to kind of talk briefly about the process for this unique facility. So the anaerobic digester did require first environmental assessment worksheet, which was reviewed by the MPCA. Because this is a newer thing to Scott County and to Minnesota, it required an environmental review, which was done in 2024. The environmental review began in June, and Demcon held a public meeting back on June 27th, project informational meeting associated with the, with the EAW. And that notification was sent out to residents within a quarter mile, as well as published on Scott County social media, on our website. They used the Next Door app to make the neighborhood aware of the public informational meeting. Once the EAW period kicked off, Demcon held a second public meeting on August 5th, which was the public meeting for the EAW and also for the MPCA air permit. Now, once the EAW was decided upon in September, it received a negative declaration from the MPCA, so they, Demcon was then allowed to move on to their conditional use permit application with Scott County. So over the fall, Scott County staff began our formal review of the project. And because there's a plat associated with this application, when we did the public hearing for the Planning Commission in January, Scott County mailed out notifications to the area in red, which is actually a half mile. So I just wanted to give some context as to that. The neighborhood, the area has been notified of this project for quite some time. So here's a site plan of the proposed anaerobic digester. So I want to step back and just say that the property is zoned I-2 heavy industrial, which does allow our more intensive land use operations. As indicated, we currently have a rock quarry here. We also have the Demcon landfill. So anaerobic digester is a recycling center classification, and the proposal here is to develop this on a total of 30 acres. The area in the upper right corner is shown as a drainage pond, which will be associated eventually with the landfill. That will be a separate four-acre parcel, but the digester portion is on 26 acres. As indicated, it's zoned I-2, and which, which allows recycling center and salvage operations as a conditional use. The CUP application narrative provided a good overview of an anaerobic digester. An anaerobic digester is a facility and technology that takes in organic materials such as food waste, animal waste, yard waste, and other organic rich materials, and produces renewable gas and biochar as a solid, a solid byproduct. The application materials presented to the Planning Commission at their January 13th meeting described the ultimate benefits and purpose of an anaerobic digester. And the main goal here is to divert waste from landfills and also then create renewable products. So the main renewable product created from this digester facility is natural gas. So natural gas created from this digester facility will be diverted, excuse me, delivered into the local commercial gas pipeline that is being added to this area. The second byproduct of the, of the digester is biochar. So biochar is a carbon-rich charcoal most commonly used as a soil amendment to aid in soil aeration, reduce soil greenhouse gases, and improve soil productivity. Biochar is also used in water filtration and as a concrete mixture additive. So getting to what's shown here in the site plan, in the center of the property is the main processing facility, which houses a receiving bunker and, excuse me, conveyors to the two digesters, which are located just south of the main facility. So it's hard to see on the screen, but in the center of the property is the main building, and then there's two rectangular objects shown just south of the facility. So those are the digester, digesters themselves. So the materials received by truck delivery into the north building, it's then conveyed to the southern building, where the digesting process occurs, and then the byproducts are shipped to other parts of the site and returned to the main office facility. The MPCA, as indicated, the, as indicated, the digester had to go through the MPCA permit for an EAW, but also an air quality permit. So a portion of the building, it would be the southwestern portion of the building, it's hard to read, but it says AQCS, Air Quality Control System. So this application required an air quality permit from the MPCA. The air quality permit deals with just what it says, air quality, odor control. So there is a whole system in this facility that is designed to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, which includes air scrubbers and other technology that filter out harmful emissions to the environment. Due to the air permit, they had to do a scrubber stack that is slightly higher than normal. So they requested a variance from the 45-foot building height maximum, and that variance would be to 65 feet. For the scrubber stack, that variance was approved by the Board of Adjustment back in January. As far as traffic to the site, it's estimated that daily trips to and from the site would be about 30 inbound outbound trucks for delivery and hauling of byproduct to and from the site, as well as employee trips. Now, other trips may increase the daily traffic to and from the site to 40 to 50. These include like employees, tours of the facility, because this is a new technology. So probably 30 to 40 daily trips per day compared to when Brian Rock, in their 2021 IUP application for their mining, Brian Rock estimated trips to their site in 420 trips per day. So once this is trans, once this is changed from a quarry to a digester facility, the traffic will be greatly reduced. Lastly, on the site plan here, to the south of the facility, you see a number of other rectangles. Those are the septic sites. There's six of those that have been identified, but basically everything on the south side there is stormwater pond and infiltration areas. So all the stormwater infiltration area is accommodated for onsite as required by county ordinance. The one thing I wanted to point out lastly on this slide here is along the eastern side of the property is US Highway 169, and you'll see kind of trees or a bunch of little circles around the east side. One of the things Demcon strive for here is to make this facility low impact to the adjacent community. So that's kind of the screening they're proposing there. They're, they're putting in a significant amount of deciduous and evergreen trees to screen the site. But also, it's hard to tell from this photo, but just inset from those trees are two-foot contours. And you can see there's a lot of contours lined up along that slope there. As this site is reclaimed from the rock quarry, they're going to reclaim it at a lower elevation than the surrounding area. So the site will actually be depressed about 20 feet. So while, you know, we did a variance for the scrubber stack, the intent is to make this, you know, fit in with the surrounding land uses. And so one of the things they're going to do is depress it. So when I go to this slide, which gives you a much better view of what we're talking about here, you can see the trees on the, on the right side of the screen, and you can kind of see around the facility, the dark shading. That is the slope and the depression. So the building will actually be, again, depressed about 20 feet below the average grade. So generally, traffic on 169 and the surrounding area, you won't see much of this site, especially once the trees grow to maturity. But this is a good, very good illustration of what the site will look like when it's fully developed. You see the main building, and then the two gray buildings in the foreground there, those are the actual digesters. The other buildings, the white building in the center, or the taller building is the Air Quality Control System. And then far to the left, that's the storage tank for the natural gas byproduct. So that's, that's it for my portion of the presentation. I do want to point out that the, lastly, that the Louisville Township Board did recommend approval of this request at their January meeting. But at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Bill Keegan with Demcon, who's going to give you a much more detailed presentation on what a digester actually is.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Bill Keegan with Demcon Companies. Thank you for having me here today. And Greg provided a great overview of the site layout and facility layout, and I hope to go through a little bit of the technology for you. We did this at Planning Commission. In interest of your time, if I'm getting too detailed, let me know. If you have questions, interject. I want to be respectful of that, but also want to provide you any information that, that you'd like to hear today about the technology of the project.
Perfect. Thank you.
It is something that we've been working on for about seven years, so happy to be here and excited to be able to present this to you today. I'll go through the slides and just interject. If you need, Demcon Companies, you're familiar with, we're a third-generation family-owned company based here in Louisville Township Shakopee area in, in Scott County. We partnered on this project with a company formerly known as Hitachi Zosen Innovus. You may see some literature that it has HZI on it. They renamed, purely just to confuse us, I'm sure, but they renamed to Canadivia Innovus, so KVI. So KVI is the new acronym. Same company, no change in ownership. It had to deal with the, I think the name Zosen means ship, and they weren't building ships anymore because they're a 150-year-old company. So KVI is our partner, and it's a good strategic partnership because not only are they the manufacturer of the technology, they've got 150 of these facilities nationwide. They also then have a vested interest in the success of this project, so I really wanted to bring them in as a partner in the facility itself from the beginning. That kind of goes through the partnership. The, the goal of this project is to, you know, meet several opportunities and goals that we have here in the state and help Scott County also meet the goals in their solid waste management plan. As Greg had mentioned, we're diverting organics from landfills. The genesis of this project seven years ago was, you know, working with Scott County, and there was a grant that we actually had with Scott County, and that was the very first step in 2019, I think January of 2019, to say, hey, if we did a project, if we did a digestion project, are there viable end markets? Because if there's not, if we don't have anywhere to go with the product, there's no project to have, right? And so the three buckets were supply of materials, technology, and end markets. And we started with that end market because we saw a lot of the policy arrows federally, locally here also, and also coming down through the county solid waste management plans, pointing towards food waste diversion. And, and at our core, we're a facility owner and operator, so we were looking for how can we serve that space? How can we continue to do what we've been doing at our campus? Those goals are listed on, on the slide here. The, the goals that Minnesota has is 75% recycling by 2030, along with a 15% waste reduction by 2030. This helps meet both those goals. There's 100% clean energy goal by 2040 and carbon neutral by 2050. So those are the, the four goals that this helps meet in addition to any of those that kind of come through the SCORE funding and the county solid waste goals and Scott County goals as well. The timeline that I mentioned there is, is starting back in 2019. We are at the local permitting stage. That should say February 25. I think this board meeting and the February 18th board meeting would be our, if we're approved, would be our final approvals as far as permitting. We have all of our state permits. As Greg mentioned, we had the Louisville Board approval and Planning Commission approval. So that's kind of our permitting process, and we're transitioning into, assuming permitting goes well, on the 18th, we'd be transitioning into construction phase, and that construction phase is a two-year process. 25, let's say, 25 to 27, and we'd expect to be producing renewable natural gas in 2027, midsummer, July, let's say, of 2027. The system consists of a high solids anaerobic digester. You probably have heard of anaerobic digesters quite a bit in the ag space, right? We're digesting manure on farms. That's not new. That's a liquid digester. I think there's one down in La Sure. This is a little bit different in that it's a high solids digester, so it's just a big vertical steel tank that you put food in, and you get liquid solids and gases out. So that's the, the process, and high solids means it's more of a sludge in there as opposed to pumps. Think of liquid going through pumps. This is more sludge kind of being pushed through this vessel with big paddles. So we would process around 75,000 tons of organic materials coming inbound, which would be source-separated food waste, food waste removed from the MSW, which happens at the R and E facility. They have a system there that I think several of you have toured, where they remove the food waste and organics, as well as other organics materials that might come back a house, which I would say would be at the back of a grocery store, for example, if they have off-spec product, things that have gone bad, or front of house, which would be the consumer-facing, when you have to separate into those bins. Different levels of, you know, contamination. The back of house is usually cleaner. The consumers, we're still working quite a bit to, to educate, unfortunately. And then there's also some yard waste. It needs some structural contents. That yard waste would be mostly wood product, wood waste, about 10,000 tons of that, just like we would need fiber in our diet. You just need a little bit of wood waste to, to have the mix. We would produce, the products that come out of this is 200,000 mm BTU per year of renewable natural gas and about 8,000, 7,500, 8,000 tons of biochar. Biochar is just charcoal, simply charcoal. If you guys have ever bought the lump charcoal for grilling, and it still looks like a stick, that's biochar. You, you have heat in the absence of oxygen, you leave basically the carbon framework, the carbon scaffolding, that's biochar. So it's taking the digestate that comes out of the digester. You, you put the food waste into the digester. It produces the gas, the natural gas. We collect the natural gas off it. What comes out is the solids. They get dewatered through a screw press, take some water out, and we take those solids and put them into a really high-temperature process with no oxygen, and that creates the biochar. I'll have pictures of it later in this. The reason we're creating biochar is we can use it for a soil amendment. We've been working with SMSC on, you know, what that's going to look like if we add that to their compost. We can use it for soil remediation projects. It works much like the carbon in your Brita filter, where it sucks up contaminants if you had them in water. So it can clean water, soil, a lot of things like this, or be used to retain nutrients and moisture in the soil. So the reason you would add to compost is it's like a bunch of little sponges, and it can hold the nutrients and hold the, the moisture in the soil. Finally, you can have it for carbon sequestration. Finally, you can have it for carbon sequestration, which is a fancy word for saying putting carbon back in the ground, right? If you capture carbon from the atmosphere, which is in the organics, if we put that back in the soil, it basically sequesters or locks up that carbon. So it's just taking carbon out of the cycle. This is what the facility would look like. I think Greg had some great renderings. This is a facility in Jankopin, Sweden. We did go around and tour these as part of that middle bucket, the technology. Once we figured out the end markets, we worked on technology, was that middle bucket. And we toured these in Sweden, in Spain, a couple in California. We're going to be probably the fourth in the country to do this kind here in the United States. There's three of them in California. And we wanted to be able to see them operating. We wanted to smell the smell, if there's a smell. We wanted to kick the tires on it. We wanted to see the inside, the outside, and understand, you know, how they worked. The one we toured here in Sweden was brand-new. So we wanted to see what ours would look like. But we also wanted to see the one where it had been there for 20 years, had the tires fallen off it, and does this thing last, right? It's great to see the shiny widget, but I want to see the other one. So we went to Boterel, Spain, and toured that one as well, and saw one that had been producing a very similar feedstock that you saw being separated out at RNE. They had been processing that for 20 years. So that's what we saw in Spain. This is the newer one. This is, really, it looks a lot like what you're going to see at our facility if you were to come tour it once constructed. There's that same rendering, another angle of it. I can spend more time on those if you guys have questions, or we can come back to them. This is kind of how the process works. If I just were to walk you through graphically what this process would look like, the vehicles would come in, like Drake said, there should be around 50 trucks a day, 50 trips a day. And the vehicles would come in, there would be high-speed overhead doors that open up. And you go in, it's a negative pressure building, meaning that we're drawing air in. So when that door opens up, the breeze is blowing in, not out, again, trying to make sure we control odor. When we went to the facility in Sweden that looked just like the facility of ours, we couldn't smell anything, even from right outside the door, right? Because they keep that negative pressure, and then they filter the air that then has to blow out of the building through a filter to maintain and make sure there's not odor problems. So you see a little orange truck by number one, they dump into a big pit. This pit has a crane that is automated, that essentially grabs the materials and feeds it onto a conveyor. That conveyor goes into the digester, which is that big horizontal thing with the number 10 in it. And it doesn't have paddles for steering, those paddles are just literally to move the material from one end to the other. They turn very slow, if you watch them, it maybe takes, you know, an hour or two to make one revolution. So it just turns slow to move the material through. From the time you go in till the time you come out of that vessel is about 14 days. So it takes two weeks, and then your food is getting digested, turned into gas, liquid solids and gases. The gases get collected off the top, where you see that yellow highlighting and that number 11 coming out, it's the gas collection. That gas then goes into a storage dome, which is 18, just a little storage dome. That's just a buffering storage dome, but ultimately that gas is going directly into the pipeline. We'd be connecting with CenterPoint Energy and selling direct into the pipeline for CenterPoint. The liquids get reincorporated back into that process. There are some excess liquids, it just depends on the amount of liquid in your feedstock. But a lot of it is using that back in your process to partially recycle liquids, but also the bio, right? They want to get the bugs, the good bugs, back into the system and keep refreshing that. Then the solids come out the bottom, they get stored in that brown tank there, that's number 16. And then the rest of this process below there shows composting. So the operations that we went and looked at in Sweden and in Boterel, Spain, are composting their solids, which is an option. We're choosing to do the biochar, as we mentioned. So ours would have a biochar process on the back of this, which is all enclosed as well. And then coming out would be biochar instead of blending it into compost. This is what the inside of that digester looks like that I just explained. This is what biochar looks like. I could have brought a sample today, we've got a few pallets of it. We've, the similar thing, we wanted to know exactly how this process worked. We wanted to know what didn't work, we wanted to smell it, kick the tires on it. So we went around and toured two different commercial operating facilities, one in Pennsylvania and one down in Georgia, and ran our exact feedstock through those processes. We brought the material that we were going to be using here for organics. We got some yard waste from SMSC, we blended them together, sent them down to this facility and made biochar. And that's where we got the biochar that you see in this picture. And the background is actually a picture of what a biochar process looks like. It's actually called gasification, it's a fancy word for a lot of heat, no oxygen. So the markets that we would have, as we mentioned, we'd be making renewable natural gas. We're in a very unique and fortunate opportunity here in Minnesota that the Natural Gas Innovation Act was just passed, which allowed our local utilities to purchase the renewable natural gas. If not for that, we would be selling to national markets, right? You'd sell, you can sell to California, you can sell to other states that have the infrastructure to, on paper, buy the renewable natural gas. And we can do that in Minnesota, so we're working with CenterPoint Energy and Excel Energy to sell them the natural gas along with the attributes, which is the sort of green credits that go along with the natural gas. I mentioned the direct pipeline connection and the biochar, and that's that bottom bullet. I mentioned how much we'd be producing already. The facility would also have a net negative carbon footprint, and that's just looking at, when they do a carbon cycle analysis, do you emit more than you take in? We would take in a lot more than we would ever emit, and so we're net-negative. They score that, which is called a carbon intensity score. That's not necessarily important, but it's a negative 60, which is a very negative facility. What that means when you're talking about greenhouse gases is we would have a greenhouse gas reduction of around 30,000 tons per year of CO2 equivalent. And that's just a measurement, to put that in sort of common sense terms to me, because it still doesn't, I can't picture what that is, is it's about 6,150 passenger vehicles is the equivalent emission reduction. It'd be like taking 6,150 cars off the road. The life of the facility is 30 years, so 30 times 30,000 is 900,000 tons of CO2 over the life of the facility. I think it says 20-year life there, it's a projected 30-year life for the facility. And those are the goals on the bottom that we had mentioned earlier. So with that, I can stand for questions that you have on the project.
Thank you very much, colleagues. Any questions? I have a few, I'm going to wait till the end, I think.
And I know you're here for us looking at the land use. My questions are not specifically on land use, they're more about the project. And I like innovation, so initially, I have good thoughts about it. So I know that it's very similar to the wastewater treatment plant that we have in Shakopee. So I know the process that this is. My questions are, I had looked at the Washington-Ramsey Board minutes back in the fall, and it looks like they had to extend your agreement to 12/31/24, so 30, at the end of December. So has that been rectified? I know the issue was finding enough people to, basically, finding enough people to fill up the digester and make it worth it for Washington-Ramsey. So I'm wondering if that's been done, and is that agreement still in place?
Mr. Chair Commissioner, very good question, and thank you for the comments and the question. Yes, everything has been finalized with Washington-Ramsey. Our relationship with them is a feedstock relationship. So they would be supplying material from the facility that you guys had mentioned, as well as some of their organics collection they do with compostable bags. So they're supplying a portion of the facility's feedstock, and that agreement has been signed and is finalized and approved by their board. So that's all completed. The reason for the extension was, some of those parts weren't in place yet, and we weren't able to sign the agreement. At the time of the initial one, it might have been end of July or something, I can't remember the initial, maybe it was September, early September. So that got extended through the end of the year. The importance about the milestone at the end of 2024 was that the Inflation Reduction Act had a federal tax credit that would benefit Minnesota, right? It would come here in the form, you know, in roughly around $20 million tax credit, because it's a $100 million project. And if you did not start your project by the end of 2024, you wouldn't be eligible for that tax credit, in which case this project wouldn't have moved forward. So that was the hard stop at the end of the year, that everything had to be in place, and we did get it in place, so.
I have another question. You talked about the federal tax credits, and, you know, there's a lot of changes going on at the federal level right now regarding climate and clean energy and that type of thing. How are your partners, CenterPoint and Excel, handling that in conjunction with this project? Is it going to make any impact on the project?
Yeah, great, Mr. Chair Commissioner, great question. We have been working a lot with CenterPoint, and we're in the final kind of contract phases with them. And we're not tying that to the federal policy. They're going under the Natural Gas Innovation Act, which is a Minnesota act, and they are interested in buying the RNG. So we are signing the agreement, and their interest remains regardless of changes at the federal level from CenterPoint. And then Excel we're working with as well.
Sure.
There was discussion regarding the truck traffic, and it was indicated that it would be about 30 trucks per day that are entering and leaving. Is that just the Ramsey Colony numbers, or is that, is that the number that is to fill up the tank or to get to the top quota?
Mr. Chair Commissioner, the, it's 30 to 50 vehicles, I believe, was the number that we had been stating, and that would be all of the traffic for the facility. It's just not a high-volume traffic facility, because it's coming in in larger trucks typically. And so that 30 to 50 would be what we would need for the facility entirely.
Okay, I appreciate that, because, you know, being in Shakopee, I'm always concerned about the traffic on 169. And is there a need to look at globally how the traffic will flow into the area? So thank you for that.
Well, I mean, one of my questions was the, you know, the federal policy. You know, sometimes things ebb and flow, and sometimes they rock and pitch. So, and if, so that part was answered. I feel like there was some, wrinkle's not the right word, but was there some change? I feel like it was middle or late last year, where there was some, maybe it was the gasification, was that added? There was some 20, 30 million dollar, maybe more, change to the plan?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the gasification, the biochar process has always been there, that's been part of the plan. But there was a change in, when we went through the state permitting process, the facilities that we've toured around the world don't have to have this air monitoring or this air control system. It's AQCS, Air Quality Control System. They don't have to have all of that. Our state was, you know, overly conservative, and maybe rightfully so. We're building it, you know, to start here. But the air quality control system added substantial cost to the facility as well as time. The project was, you know, not supposed to take as long. And with any large project, every time you call a vendor back and say, hey, we need you to re-quote this, costs just keep going up. So there was some cost escalation due to time, but most of it was adding that air quality control system and then all of the monitoring requirements, equipment requirements that come along with that. We'll see if it is needed, but I can assure you that we are protective of human health, the environment, and air quality, given the overkill that we have with the system.
And then was this system solution, did it, because there was the test in Pennsylvania, or whatever it was, and is that where all the different testing labs or whatever, oh, it just blows apart PFOS?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, we tested the biochar from both the Pennsylvania and the Georgia facilities. We also tested for PFOS on the inbound materials. So we took our feedstocks and tested those and said, what's going into the digester? And then we tested the outbound PFOS to say, you know, what do we have? I'm sorry, the outbound biochar, to see if we have PFOS in there. And, you know, probably not surprisingly, because I think it's well-documented, that high temperature and enough time, residence time in there destroys PFOS. It just breaks down the carbon fluorine bonds. But we have very high temperature, 1,200 degrees C, and enough residence time where we're seeing that the PFOS were non-detect, down to parts-per-trillion levels in the testing. So that was great news. You know, I won't stand here and say we would destroy all, because I don't know what the word "all" means. Tell me what level we're testing to, but down to parts-per-trillion, which is the requirements they're showing out there for testing, it's the limits the labs can even test to, where we're non-detect.
But there was a significant amount testing on the stock going in?
There was PFOS in the feedstock. I would say PFOS, as you guys know and have seen the news, is ubiquitous, it's everywhere. So it was that amount, it wasn't like there was extra. It was the amount that's in all of our food, the amount that's in food waste packaging, the amount that's in our products, right? And so that amount was there, and I would have been shocked if it wasn't. But then that was gone after our process, to the levels stated, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, thanks, Bill, thanks, everybody, for the work you've done on this. I want to thank you to cover a couple of things. First of all, thanks over the past couple of years for really working with any residents in the township and the folks we've sent your way, because obviously there's been a lot of chatter, a lot of questions, some concerns. And then thank you also to your company for investing in this. I know that sometimes it'd probably be easier just to create bigger and bigger landfills and take in more trucks and make more money. So thank you for this investment, because I think as this board looks at solid waste and really thinks about the long-term plans, this is exciting and good. Just two small things. It seems, and I apologize if I miss it because of my coughing fits, doctor says I'm fine, I just sound bad. It seems to me, just because I drive, I'm on these roads all the time, that RNE is already sending feedstock to the SMSC facility. So a lot of these trucks already are entering in Scott County. Do we have a net of the number of trucks? Because I don't think it's a pure new trucks coming to the county, they're already coming here.
Yep, Mr. Chair Commissioner, yeah, great point. There is some materials already coming to RNE. I think they're sending some of the food waste that has been separated out at the facility. It's certainly not all of the feedstock that will be coming to us, but there are some trucks coming to SMSC. I think most of those 30 to 50 trucks would be coming to our facility. I think maybe the trucks a day that would be coming out of that would be, you know, single-digit, right? So, but still, to your point, there are some coming here, and SMSC is processing their food waste. But, you know, as far as truck counts and traffic, it'll be a great reduction from what they're doing with the current use, right? We're going from hundreds, I forget the exact number that Greg mentioned, down to 30 to 50.
Sure, thank you. And then my last point, this is a little more global, too. As you've went through this process, I know our board has, is very interested in efficiencies and having some influence on our state and federal partners about permitting. And last session, you know, supposedly such great progress on making permitting easier and faster, and I know that wasn't your experience. So I just think that, as you probably can kind of summarize how that's went the last couple of years, and that's good for us to know as we continue to work with those partners on those efficiencies, too, that end up costing a lot of money and time for all of us. So that's my other point. I think I've been a little more into the details, so I am excited to see how this works, and hopefully it'll be a great thing, not for just Scott County, your company, but the greater good.
Mr. Chair Commissioner, thank you for those comments. And regarding permitting, you're warming my heart, as you know. This is near and dear to my heart, and something that I've advocated for a long time is more streamlined permitting. Let's make sure that our permitting is for certain, certainly protective of human health and the environment. Nobody wants a dirty environment, clean water, clean air is what everybody wants. But moves at the speed of business, and that's where we've been challenged, right? And so I've been working extensively with our agency through other channels and through our company to try to improve that process, and any support that you guys offer would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say, I've seen this at least three times, maybe four, in our committees and whatever. And the more I see, it's contagious, I think. The more I see this, the more I think we need to do this. And the sooner this gets done, the better, in my opinion, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that comment.
I mean, you heard it there. Anything else? Anything else from the, from K? Anything else from Kate, from the Garzar, from garbage and garbage?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm going to be very brief, because I feel like you've been given a lot of really good information, so I don't need to go over it again, but I just want to speak to how this project and other projects that have come before you fit into the cell waste plan that we recently updated. In that plan, you'll find that it very much supports technology, because it's that critical piece that we need to reduce landfilling. So these projects, like Waste to Energy, which you toured in Hennepin County, the HERC, some of you, and got to see how waste is turned into electricity, or the anaerobic digester where oxygen is taken out of the process, and then organics are turned into renewable gas and biochar, or we also have an aerobic digester here in Scott County, where oxygen is added into the system, and the ORF has their new facility opening up this spring, and that organics will be turned into mulch and compost. So, these technologies are wonderful, they are helping us reduce landfilling, and we've got these great businesses that are investing a significant amount to make sure that those organics are being processed, managed correctly. And then, of course, our plan also explains how Scott County staff and the other metro staff are working really hard right now to increase recycling. And we're going to be focusing on organics, because it's yard and food waste, that's over, over twenty-five percent of the waste being thrown away is food. So we're going to be going after that, and we're going to need a facility to take it to. And we need facilities that are going to manage that correctly. And these processes, both facilities here have gone through a rigorous review, through environmental review, and staff have followed those from beginning to end, and we feel very comfortable that they're going to do it correctly. So, I will end with that, if you have any questions for me, you know where I am, but I just want to note.
Kate, will you put in one pitch for recycling on even glass and plastic right now, just on the public, so they can hear? And then, secondly, Scott County being able to utilize this facility and where you're at, how does that fit into the big picture for the region?
So I would love to give a plug for recycling. Please, recycling is critical right now. Someone just had a great quote, think about what we would do if we did nothing. We would be surrounded by landfills. So we have to recycle, it's, we have to reduce our landfilling, and recycling is good for the economy, it's good for the environment, it creates jobs. Please recycle, there's a lot of myths out there right now about, oh, my item doesn't really go into the recycling, it goes into, you know, it all gets mixed together, and I think really, it's just education, and when we get out there and get the information, I think people will change their behavior, and when they understand how to recycle. Sure. And I just want to do a plug, that DemCon has really great videos on where recycling goes, we've got Anchor Glass that takes glass bottles, By the Yard takes plastic, am I missing anybody? Those are the two that come to my head. So it is an impact right here in Scott County. When you recycle, you are helping Scott County's businesses.
Can I just make a comment? I would love to see those businesses grow, and have us become an area that is using recycled material, and being innovative with it, so I could like that one.
Again, I'll just mention that Trista Martinson, the Executive Director of Ramsey-Washington, Recycling and Energy is here, if you do have any questions. It was mentioned that Ramsey-Washington, their organics are processed at the RNE, and then once done being processed, they're then transported to the SMSC ORF and to DemCon.
Welcome.
Thank you, I really, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, it's really exciting to be here. I love the Garzar, I might take that back to the office today, that's awesome. They had, you know, previously Commissioner Reinhardt was called the Trash Queen, and I couldn't quite take her crown, so I, maybe I'll take the Garzar, but thank you, it's great to be here, it's really fantastic to be able to have this opportunity in Scott County, and Ramsey-Washington bringing our money and our business to Scott County as we've partnered with DemCon. We are, have signed a contract, as you mentioned, Commissioner Brennan, with DemCon, and as part of that agreement, we agreed that we would supply sixty-five thousand tons of feedstock. So I'm on the hook for coming up with sixty-five thousand tons of organics. I will tell you that we have done our assessment, and when our program is completely rolled out, we're going to be short. And so, why, I am now on the road talking to every other county, and hopefully Scott County would be interested in helping me come up with that sixty-five thousand tons of feedstock, I would probably be short close to sixteen thousand tons, which could be an organics program right here in Scott County. We've worked hard, we signed a contract that both gave us, we did some fundraising and put some upfront capital to build this facility with DemCon, as well as how much feedstock would be required, so that we could keep the tip fee down. As you all know, as elected officials, we need those numbers to be low, so that our residents don't get charged additional fees, and so we've worked really hard. If we're short, Ramsey and Washington has to make up the difference in cash, so we will keep those tip fees down, that's a commitment we've made. And so really, the opportunity here is that we have taken on the risk, because we know it's the right thing to do, it aligns with our values, but someone in Minnesota has to go first, and so Ramsey-Washington decided to do that. And again, we're talking to other counties, Anoka, Dakota, and Scott, hopefully that you'll be interested, and we can talk more offline of what does that look like. Our program is a little different than, Hennepin County, for instance, collects organics, they chose to do a bin system, an additional bin, and we decided not to do that. That puts a lot more trucks on the road, we are very concerned about how many trucks are on the roads and the cost, as well as carbon and all the pollution that goes with trucks. We also would have to pay for all those bins, it's way more expensive and replacement, so we went through a bag system. We're using organic, durable, organic bags to collect the food scraps, people fill them up at their households and throw their food scraps in their normal trash bin. Then we have a robot system that picks those trash, those organic bags out of the trash, as we're sorting our trash for lots of other things as well. And then those organics come down currently here to the digester, or the compost facility first, and then later to the digester. If, for some reason, in our contract, we have a backup plan, if something, you know, there's maintenance that needs to be done at the digester or what have you, they'll go back to that compost facility, so that it's never going to the landfill, that's the ultimate goal, is that our organics never go to landfill. We believe that this process, if you think about it, organics right now all go to landfill, so our commitment of removing sixty-five thousand tons from local landfills, again, none of those landfills are in Ramsey or Washington County, that we're sending them to other places, like Scott County and Dakota County, that we're taking that out of the landfill to do this process. So, it's a really exciting project, we have rolled out, we're about a third of the way rolled out in our communities, we have been doing organics collection for a year now in communities and collecting, it's going really well, and the bags are standing out, the robots are working, things are going really well, and so we're putting, we're bringing on two additional sort facilities, because not all of them, our own facility is too small to have all the trucks coming through, and so we're expanding two additional sort facilities, one in Blaine with Walters, and they're expanding so they could potentially accommodate Anoka County and sorting as well of food scraps, in addition to the northern Washington County and northern Ramsey County is where our transfer site is, and then Waste Management is also building a sort facility with their transfer station in St. Paul, so they're in the process of that. Our goal is to have complete rollout, and every household in both Ramsey and Washington participating by 2027. We know we won't get everyone, it's a big audacious goal, but we need at least forty percent in order to meet the numbers that we're at, and we're currently, as we flip the switch for a new community to participate, within two weeks, we've had twelve percent registration and participation, so it's going really fast, and it's kind of like a snowball, right? It keeps rolling, the more people know about, the more they're participating, and they see how easy it is. They also recognize how much food they're wasting, and we're actually seeing a reduction in waste overall, which is kind of exciting as a byproduct. But we would be happy to have Scott County as a partner in this project.
Great. I got a question, because Kate, you mentioned twenty-five percent of our waste is food or organics, organics, and then I feel like, Trista, when we were on the, on the little field trip, that organics is a high energy, or the highest? Or one of the highest, to extrapolate out the?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the question, I wouldn't say it's the highest energy, petroleum is the highest energy, right? But of what we're trying to process, it has a really high energy, because of the methane and the decomposition when that food breaks down, and right now, that's all going into the atmosphere, where in this process, we'll capture it, be able to take the gas, and then also reduce the amount of space going to landfill.
Great.
It's literally low-hanging fruit.
Right, nice.
That was for Commissioner Wolf.
Look at that, see, she knows the room, she knows the room. Any other questions? There was a claim that you made, a painted change one of our signs, I brought this up before, I don't know if the sheriff is here, but we're known as what, the land of big fun, land of big fun, right?
Oh, really?
And then, we might need to check your hands for paint, but I feel like somebody wrote "and smart dumps." I don't know, we might check that, we got the ORF for Prairie, Prairie, and then?
And great innovation for the environment, that's what it is.
So, I'm taking it, then we have some direction to sit down with Trista and talk about Scott County, and what this potentially might look like here, based on our plan and what we're hearing.
Win, win for our folks, our cute little adorable county here, our citizens.
Great.
Good project.
Great.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, with that, we're going to move on to item number eight, committee reports and Commissioner updates, and Commissioner Ulrich has already sent his in via writing, so why don't I look down to my right?
Commissioner Brecky? Thank you, Mr. Chair. After our last board meeting on January 21st, of course, we had a workshop. January 22nd had my NACO Committee Human Services and Education monthly meeting. Also, on January 22nd, I attended the AMC New Commissioner and Board Chair Training, even though I'm not a new commissioner or board chair, but as part of my AMC roles. January 23rd had a meeting with Commissioner Beer and Jake Cruising to discuss communications, and just where we're at with our county communications and our ideas and thoughts. Also, January 23rd was the State Mentally Ill and Dangerous Civil Commitment Reform Task Force. Really, that task force is focusing right now on looking at, where's other community placements besides the state mental hospital in St. Peter? When are, when are folks not bad enough to have to go to St. Peter, and do we have other options for them? So really, been talking with some, with county attorney offices around the state, with human services agencies, to think about if there's some other options, because we know those beds are very limited and very expensive, and sometimes our people have to go there. January 24th was AMC Board of Directors meeting, January 29th, State Community Supervision Advisory Council. January 30th, Commissioner Beer and I and Leslie met with the SMSC Chairman and Administrator, I thought a really good meeting about just common concerns and things going on in our area. January 30th, I was privileged to join, I think, the Sheriff's Gathering over across the street with Representative Angie Craig and Chalkabye Police Chief Jeff Tate and some, some others from our county, just to talk about mental health, especially mental health issues in jail, and with folks coming out of jail. January 30th was the MICA Legislative Forum that we hosted at the Wilds, thanks, everybody, for being there and being part of that, I think our staff did just an excellent job with those presentations, all based on human services, but as we know, very important to the work we do, the budget, and trying to really get us on the same page with so many of our county neighbors. And then finally, January 31st, I had a meeting with Credit River Mayor Chris Kostick to discuss Scale Legislative Committee. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the 23rd, the Vermillion River Joint Powers Organization met via JPO, kind of quiet, except one thing happened there that-
Kind of a big thing, right?
Never happened in, ever. The chairman is now from Scott County.
Wow.
Never happened.
Heard all about it.
Really?
Oh, yes, I did.
Oh, God, I got to start signing autographs.
Wow.
Anyhow, then I find out, I have to put my credit card in to do something, so it's like, wow, what a great honor. Then Elkhorn Market met that evening, Chief Fridge is retired, on the 29th, met with the administrator. And the 30th, MICA at the Wilds, as was mentioned by Commissioner Brecky, very nice meeting, I did get a lot of comments from people saying that our staff had done a really good job presenting on that, so that's, that's very nice to hear. Last night, February 3rd, Credit River had their twice monthly meeting, they're looking for a new administrator, the interim is going to be done in about two months, they've had some interviews, there's some likes and dislikes about all of the candidates they've had, so we'll see where that goes to. And then Cedar Lake met last night, they're still having problems with garbage being dumped over by Doyle-Kennefex, so they'd like to possibly have a meeting with us and us take back the, that road, or do something, or close it, or something, because it's, it sounds like a dumping ground. So anyhow, that is my report, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Brennan.
Thank you. January 21st was Prior Lake, Spring Lake, Watershed District meeting, and they're working really hard on curb, their focus is now going to be on Spring Lake, because of the lower amount that's in the upper Prior Lake, so they're going to be able to focus more on Spring Lake, so that's very good. January 22nd, I had a meeting with Brittany Lane, January 22nd, I also met with Julie Hanson, to get an update from her, it's, it's just been a while, so it was good to talk to her. January 23rd, I was the Chalkabye Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting, and the Scott County CDA was given the recognition for community partnership, especially in the area of the Drive for Five Initiative.
Oh, yeah.
January 27th was the AMC Legislative Update Phone Call. January 27th was the WPC meeting. January 28th was the Mental Health LLC, and the new Advisory Board members that have joined, so we went through kind of a update on who we were and what we're doing. January 29th, I attended the NACO Phone Call Update. January 30th was the MICA Annual Legislative Lunch and, or Dinner that we had. February 3rd, I had a meeting with Brad Davis to get an update from him, and also, on January 30th, I spoke to Sarah Kirfman, who is the Director of the Down Syndrome Association in Minnesota. We talked about Mint Choices, to see if we can get them to that organization to help us make changes at the legislative level, which she definitely felt that that organization was supportive of it, and she also provided us names of other organizations to get them on board and provide support also.
Is that, if I can interject, they have like some influence in Washington as well, like are they, they're that?
Yep, they are that, that big. She said that Pete Stoppa is very supportive of the work that they do, and so he would be a good person to get on board.
Sure, yeah, good, nice.
That's all I have.
Awesome, thank you very much. 21st, post-board workshop, on the 22nd, MMCD had their executive board, and then later that afternoon-ish, I think it was, met with Fish Board. On the 23rd, as was mentioned, met with Jake Cruising, Commissioner Brecky on comms. On the 24th, I think that was my, was it my official, first official AMC district? I think it was, yeah, the official. Built some relationships, some like-mindedness, and figure out how we can push back on the state on a handful of things. 27th, I did the Community Health Improvement Committee Zoom, and then later that afternoon, I was on a Zoom call with several others, with Senator Port, talking about family medical leave and some of the changes and adjustments and tweaks, and maybe kicking out the start of that. She seemed receptive to some of those, some of those things, you know, we'll see how that all plays out with our, how would you call it, legislative session, I don't know, I'll leave the adjectives off of that. I'll leave the adjectives off of that. On the 20th, Chair Vice Chair. Later that night, went to Prior Lake City Council, their work session. The largest piece of it was talking about flock cameras. And those are the cameras that I think some of our cities already have in place. I don't know if they're necessarily AI assisted, but they're smart cameras, you know, reading license plates, the pros and cons. And they would maybe start with, Prior Lake anyway, starting with potentially putting them at parks, so that you'd maybe get notice if it closes at 10. Boom, they see a car, it texts the PD. And so, you know, I know there's, you could argue both sides. On the 30th, as was mentioned as well, had a morning meeting with SMSC. Oh, it's good to come and talk and see what's going on here and there, and the potential for doing a flag exchange with the tribe as well, which I hope happens. 30th, again, was mentioned, Angie Craig met with across the street with the Sheriff's Department. Boy, she shows up a lot. She's here a lot. It's good to have some time with her to talk about all the things that we would love to see changed to impact our folks here at Scott County. I think that concludes my report. Looking down to my left. Administrator?
Yeah, Commissioners, you noted the staff, but I actually wanted to recognize them.
Oh, shoot. Yeah, forgot that.
I thought that Barb Doll and Suzanne Ernst did a great job presenting at MICA and the leadership they're showing on some of these regional committees. But as well, that was Brittany Lane's first time presenting at such a large meeting. And she just did an outstanding job and is just such a leader in looking for efficiencies and trying to show improvement. It was couldn't have been prouder of those three. February 17th, just a reminder that this campus, the Scott County campus, will be closed for President's Holiday. That will take place before our next meeting. And then we have a work session today on ditch abandonment that Cindy and the staff have been working on and the public engagement on that following this meeting. So another very important topic.
And thanks for bringing that up. It was buried in my chicken scratch here, that before we move on to county attorney. Yes, on the 30th, attended the MICA Annual. And I, yes, we hosted it in our county, but our folks, I think, are really good at what they do. And and whether it's at a MICA or an AMC or on a senator call or a house, you know, ref call or across the street, like, people see that we are really serious about trying to make change, that not only impacts our county, but impacts the state, that that if we can do things here that are some people can replicate elsewhere, like, please come take what we have. We want to see that change. So yes, I agree, really great representation. And people were really paying attention. And I heard lots of comments of like, wow, they, you know, experts in their field. So thank you to, I know the camera around, but for our staff. All right, sorry. Moving to our right, county attorney.
Mr. Chair, we do not need to meet.
Love it. Love it. Okay, we're going to move on to number 11. But before we do, as was mentioned, we are gonna, this meeting will be followed by a workshop on a federal funding update. You may have heard a few things about that, a ditch abandonment workshop, an ERP quarterly update, and also a financial update for our fourth quarter of 2024, and then ending with a Commissioner Ron Robin. Which I want to mention, this meeting, of course, is obviously open to the public. Workshops are also open to the public, if any, if that was ever a question. I mean, that's not a new thing. But, okay, we're going to a workshop. We're looking for-
Motion to adjourn.
There we go. And a-
Second.
Second.
We got a second, motion and a second. Any discussion on adjourning? Otherwise, I'm looking down, Michelle, for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Weckman-Brecke?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf?
Aye.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Brennan?
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. Thank you. We are adjourned.